The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on our agenda as always is public comment and I will open the door to public comment. Seeing no one coming to the mic, I think we could proceed with closing that comment. And we'll move to our agenda items. The first item on our agenda is a report from Superintendent Meredith Nato. Meredith, if you'd like to do that, I would appreciate it.
So I want to start just by, with a proposed composition for the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. The consultant that we met with has suggested having ten to eleven members of that committee. So I'm proposing student rep, a board rep, a teacher from each level, pre-K five, six, eight, and nine, twelve. So three in total, two administrators, a parent from each building, and an at-large community member. Which would give a total of ten. I would be an ad hoc member of that committee. And the work would be facilitated by the consultant.
That sounds like an excellent plan to me. Does anyone have any thoughts about that? Or anyone who might be interested in serving as the board rep on the Strategic Planning Committee? Ingrid, would that be something that you would consider?
It's something I would consider, um, it-
You can think about it, but just, you know, I think that the, the, what, what are your concerns?
Just trying to jock up the calendar.
That's what he figured.
Um, no, I would, I would think about it. I had, I did serve on the Stri- Strategic Planning Committee for the school system I worked for before, for a number of years, so.
Do you have an idea of what the meeting would be like or how often? Um, well, the board has laid out a pretty aggressive timeline for having some of that work done. So you're looking to have it for early to mid-November at the latest. So I think it's going to be weekly or bi-weekly, probably with some homework in between. Um, I don't know yet because we haven't proposed this committee to anyone. You know, for teachers, an after-school meeting generally works best. But we're going to have to see based on who expresses interest in this, what's achievable in terms of timing. But I would say it's a, again, the commitment really ends mid-November. So we're looking at, you know, early to probably mid-September realistically to mid-November for that work.
And after-school work, so.
So why don't we leave it, I know, Ingrid, you're thinking about Elizabeth, you're contemplating it.
I'll do it. Put me down.
Elizabeth is volunteered to do it. Thank you.
So we will, if, if the board's comfortable with that composition, we'll start kind of advertising that as, as school resumes with the intention of kind of appointing that committee in early September.
I, I like the makeup, sounds good to me.
Our administrative team spent last week at Plymouth State University attending their Problems of Practice Summer Summit. And so the focus areas there were around co-teaching, universal design for learning and inclusive curriculum, performance-based learning, multi-age and learning progressions, quality performance assessment. So a lot of those pieces of the work that we are, have already begun or are continuing with in the coming years. So it was a good opportunity for us to work as a team, but also to network with some other districts. Plymouth State will be supporting us over the next year through three more in-person sessions, as well as some on professional resources and consultation. So that was a great start to that work and we look forward to growth there. Board asked also at the last meeting for information on non-parent newsletter subscribers. That is a manual task of comparing two lists. And so our IT staff does not have the capacity to do that right now, but they will try to get to that once school is up and running and, and report back to you. Since our last meeting, we've received two donations. One in the amount of seventy-six dollars from Bottom Line Technologies as part of their corporate charitable giving program to the junior, senior high music program on behalf of their employee Tracy Clark. We also received another seventy-five dollars from a community member to defray unpaid lunch balances. And I, I'm not confident whether that one is anonymous or not. So if it's not, we will acknowledge that person at the next meeting. But both have received thank you letters from the district. Our impact fees balance is two hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
What's the time of?
June of two thousand twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one. The board at the last meeting asked me to provide some information on non-resident tuition for employees. The only two districts in our greater region that I were able to find with policies were Oyster River and Stratford. In speaking to both of those districts, neither has had that be in practice for a number of years. It was previously in a contract agreement in Oyster River School District and was just a opportunity for employees to pay a partial tuition cost in Stratford. But neither district has had, currently has, or has for a few years, had anyone take advantage of that. I can certainly share those, actually, I think those policies are included in your packet as references.
So that's just something we can discuss though?
Mm-hmm. Late start committee, we're still waiting to hear back from a couple of the prior members, but we hope that we'll hear from them before the next meeting. We know we will need to add at least an elementary teacher, an association representative, and an admin rep or reps to that committee. So again, once we have heard back from those other members and we know whether or not we need some other stakeholders, we will bring that back and advertise that as well. We have this extra week this year before school starts. But the week of August twenty-seventh is a busy week for us. On the twenty-seventh, our teacher leaders will be meeting with the administrative team in the morning. The twenty-eighth is new teacher orientation. It's also mentor training with our lead mentors. Amy Rossi will be spearheading that, assisted by Allison Fink this year, who is new to that role. We also have paraprofessional training occurring on that day. All staff report back on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth for some back-to-school preparation and building meetings. We are deferring having a district gathering on those opening days this year in consideration for the construction and some of the disruption that has occurred for teachers whose rooms maybe had to be packed up a bit differently or relocated due to the construction. We have a workshop day on September eleventh, so we intend to use a little bit of time on that day to bring the faculty together as a whole.
I think that was an excellent decision because people might be a little discombobulated with the state of things. And I think honoring them with that time is, is very important.
The twenty-eighth at six-thirty is a parent night for junior, senior high parents just to sort of orient them to some of the changes in the building related to construction, answer questions, give them the opportunity to walk around. And we'll be doing the same thing at the elementary school on August thirtieth. If parents have questions, certainly, and aren't able to attend those times, they can reach out to building administrators or to our office and we will try to answer those questions. There are changes in the traffic patterns at both schools for the upcoming year. And information will be coming home from the principals about those changes, I anticipate, next week. The elementary school changes will affect pickup time at the end of the day for parents. Bus pickup will remain at the same time, but it will affect the pickup traffic pattern because, again, we don't have access to the entire rear of the building due to the work on the additions. And at the junior, senior high, it will affect both parent drop-off and pickup because, again, we don't have access around the perimeter of the building as the additions wrap about three-quarters of, of the existing building. So it will make for some challenges, but we've been working with our school resource officer, our administrators. One of our administrators actually went to crossing guard training, Chris Mizony, this week with our insurance carrier, just so, again, we are all kind of on the same page about managing some of these challenges coming into the year. Mr. Mizony also sent out to our high school parents information about parking permits. SST students are kind of top of that list for priority, followed by seniors, students with jobs. He spelled out some of that criteria by application. We have thirty-three spaces available to us at the Beach Street Lot, just down the street here where the old senior center used to be. We appreciate the town's help with that. Last year, I think we issued somewhere around forty parking permits in total. So hopefully that won't have a significant impact on students and families for this year. But those applications are due soon. So if you have received that email or overlooked it, please check on that and get back to Mr. Mizony.
Can we go back to the crossing guard? So you have the principal being the crossing guard?
He chose to go to the training. I haven't assigned anyone to be a crossing guard. It's a duty at the high school in the morning. The SRO will also be assisting with traffic. I think it's going to be depending on, on how they decide to break up those duties. But, but our administrators do provide a visible presence at drop-off and pickup and have for years. So the opportunity to get some training through our insurance carrier was one we thought we should take advantage of.
Meredith, one thing I think we need to think about with the twenty-seventh and, and thir- twenty-eighth and thirtieth meetings at the junior senior high, it's just, you may be sending an email blast out about that because I'm not sure what sort of visibility we have in the meeting, just so people are aware that that's coming up before the school year starts, just to put the info out.
And that information should be going home from principals at both schools next week.
Okay.
And what time is it, the twenty-eighth at?
Both are at six-thirty.
And you did say that and I didn't even pay attention.
No, that's okay.
Here, Meredith, downstairs, or?
In the schools.
In the schools.
Yeah, so people can see the physical building and understand that there is zero construction happening in the schools this school year. It is all in cordoned off external pieces building out the additions. So I'm just going to reiterate that frequently, but there is no work happening within the school core.
And we just did a tour this week and there'll be, again, so there were no surprises, unfinished floors, cement painted floors. It will look undone. So the expectation should not be that you go in and you think everything is done. The other comment I'd make, by the way, is on the school is, Mike and I have had the opportunity to go to site meetings every week, as well as meetings with Meredith and Greg. And I think all of the participants that we've seen have been doing just absolutely excellent. The performance of the contractors and, and subs has just been A-plus in terms of safety and getting work done.
Related to that, both the building inspector and fire chief have already done walkthroughs of the buildings and are continuing to do sort of final inspections, but they have been very satisfied with everything they've seen. I think the final fire inspection at the junior, senior high is the twenty-fourth or sometime next week. We also will be at our next meeting recognizing our custodial staff for their efforts under some challenging circumstances this summer. So we appreciate their, their efforts. They've been, you know, they've been tight on space and having to accommodate the construction schedule and with the commitment that they have to try to finish the work they do every year. And while we've, we've tried to relieve some of that pressure, they take their, their jobs very seriously and we appreciate that. I also want to just acknowledge our IT staff. They're prepping the Chromebooks right now for grades five through nine to complete our one-to-one deployment across those grade levels. But they also have had to move technology within the building. They've had to rerun cables. We've redone our fiber run. They ran new fiber to the SAU. They've been doing under, under modular work, in closets, climbing over ceilings and, and doing a lot of cable pulling themselves. So, again, I appreciate their efforts and, and, again, sort of positive attitude about, about this work. We will be installing the end of this month. We're upgrading our, we got a, through the budget process last year, our bid for fiber. We're getting seven hundred, upgrading to seven hundred and fifty megabytes for less than we were paying for five hundred, I think. So that will hopefully support our continued technology expansion. Summer program ended August second. I want to thank Erica McNeil and Christina Cochran for their coordination efforts. We had to run both programs out of the elementary school this summer, as you know, as opposed to out of two buildings, as we have done. We had a rough start with a power outage in our first week, but we had no further technical difficulties after that. And we appreciated the, the support of the parents on that one challenging day. But program went well and we look forward to having those learners back in a couple of weeks. Our entitlement grants, federal grants, Title I and Title II A for the upcoming year have been approved. Sean Pine helped us with the Title I grant this year. And Shayna Thorell worked with me and Rachel Spainhauer worked with both of them on completing the Title II grant, so that's good news. I want to acknowledge our new school resource officer, Nick Drew. You had a memo from Chief Drew included in your packet. Well, Officer Drew's been selected to be the elementary school SRO. And our elementary principal was involved in those interviews along with staff from the police department. He's a ten-year law enforcement veteran. Worked in Northwood before he came here to Newmarket in two thousand twelve. He's already received lead training and next week he is going to school resource officer training in Oakland, Maine.
Great. Meredith, where's Officer Drew going to reside in the interim for now? Will he have an office space or?
The elementary school is working to provide space. I don't think he's going to have his own private sheltered office since our assistant principal hasn't had one for over a decade. Well, I'll be using some makeshift quarters, but we are used to kind of sharing space there and providing privacy in closed offices when, when people need that. I think that's it.
Perfect, thank you. Any school board committee reports? I know probably the only committee that's been meeting on a consistent basis is the building committee. Are there any updates from that?
Yeah, the building committee meets or has been meeting on a monthly basis. We met earlier this week. We met on Tuesday. Everything's on time and on budget, if you will. We've had some change orders with regard to materials, unsuitable materials at the, at the elementary school. There was also a unmapped sewer line behind the high school that runs to Lamprey River that we had to move. I forget the number, but it was in the twenties on that, twenty thousands on, on that, to have that done. The two sewer line issues, the board ought to know about, we talked about on Tuesday. At the, at the high school, I think the number was twenty-three thousand, okay? To run a sewer line, basically if you're looking at the new entrance down the right-hand first floor hallway, which is, I guess, came in pleasantly lower than what we might have thought because we're doing floor work there anyways. And so some of that work, the floor work, was already incorporated in the budget. Down at the elementary school, a little different story. That's still a work in progress. It's still in terms of diagnosing what we might do. We did get an estimate for replacing the line in there. Couple of things the board ought to know. This, as far as I understand, is not necessary to this project. It's something that can be done on its own if and when we think we need to do it. So we've got to do some further camera work with regard to the line. It, it does appear to be a dip in it, but it's, it's working. It should work. It's only thirty years old. It may need some cleaning. As part of this project, we're not going to be running the kitchen waste through that line anymore with the grease and all that stuff is going to a different line. And that's a factor too, a helpful factor. So I guess the message there is just stay tuned for more information, maybe, maybe by next month or whatever. But not as, maybe as, as major of a issue with regard to this project as we might have originally thought.
When we did the kindergarten room, it went and it dipped and it was filled with sand. That was the issue back then, so.
Yeah, there hasn't been an issue with it in over a decade, according to Brian O'Connor. And, and it was cleaned at that time and hasn't presented an issue since. But, but again, in doing our due diligence and thinking about our capital expenses, we investigate it and we see what happens. But we, you know, we budget for other things as part of our capital budget. Roofs that aren't included in this building project, ongoing repair and maintenance. So that's something we can continue to keep on the list.
So one thing we talked about is, is cleaning it out because the camera noticed some like cups, like plastic cups and knives and things kids might throw in, in a drain or whatever, or adults even. But, and, and maybe a, a cleaning out is a better financial option than replacing. Because the issue there with that line is it's so deep. You would need to, and it runs right down the middle of the hallway, which we weren't going to touch anyways. We weren't going to touch that flooring as part of this project. So we have to dig all that stuff up. We'd have to dig the, the nice tile at the entranceway up. It would, it would be a major project and, you know, it's, it's far enough down that you might run into issues where you have to shore up walls, which, which gets expensive. But it may, this, this may not be necessary at all. We just, we're still going to, Ekman's looking further into it. It may be just that we clean it and leave it at that for now anyways, so. That's all I can think of. Oh, Jeanie did mention that they're doing some final, there's a lot of work actually to be done between now and the opening. They're, they're going to put in the aluminum doors at the front of the high school. You see those plywood things now so that there'll be an actual door there. And they're going to do final paving, not only of the bus loop, but of the parking lot across the street. So that'll happen, I think, like, towards the-
By the end of next week.
Yeah, and then the striping and all that stuff, so. I, I, I just, just a comment, I mean, you, you drive by and you just, I mean, we took just a peek out back. You can't get a feeling for the scope of stuff going on. They had the boilers up, the, you see the trailer there, that's, that's all hooked up and ready to go. It's really, there really is a, there's a lot going on. Everybody sees the fence that's up. We got the final permit for the DOT down at the elementary school, the curb cut permit. So we can finish off, Ekman, I should say, can finish off that area where you see that, that new seater fence, so.
It's sort of exciting to see the plans come to life in a real way. Like, you know, when I was driving by, I saw the, the boiler trailer and everything, but also just the entryway and you can see it taking shape and the pillars and everything. It's, it's an exciting time.
I think, I think it will be important to, like, those, to have those speed signs in so folks are slowing down in, in the construction zones. You know, the, the new signs that we have already talked about, not signs, but signals that show you that blank and tell you twenty miles an hour, I guess, or whatever.
Pending approval from the DOT.
Right, pending DOT approval. But they're, they're just replacing what we got there anyway, so hopefully that's not a huge issue, so. Do we have those, Meredith? Are they just waiting to go up once the DOT, yeah, so?
We did that a while ago.
Yep, that's it.
Can I just mention one thing around sort of site safety? People have continued to sort of go around or over fences and access our property, both of those properties with their dogs or on their own. They are active construction sites. It is a potential safety risk to people. I want to just be very clear about that. I've reached out to the PD to ask them to sort of step up enforcement. We're looking at, you know, making sure our cameras in those locations are working so we can monitor that. But we're also at the elementary school where we had construction fencing at the back of the property that people have continually breached. We're putting up hard fencing back there. So, again, I hope people can, I, I understand the curiosity factor for sure. And, and if you're interested in trying to make an appointment to, to see the site, there are times that we can try to do that with you, but please be careful.
And their pictures up on the site, aren't they?
Yeah, Greg's been posting pretty routinely site photos.
All right, any other committee reports?
SST meets on the twenty-seventh.
The next thing is sort of our school board calendar. We talked a while, there are two different calendars that we have. And Meredith, I'll do the workshop one first if that's okay.
Sure, I think the calendar is just the, one at the front of your packet and then-
Oh, yes, because the calendar that I was about to review is later on the agenda, so thank you. Yes, I can read sometimes. Next week, we have the joint school board town council meeting, seven o'clock downstairs. Dale and I had a phone call a couple of days ago just to review some things and Meredith and Steve have been coordinating, coordinating the agenda. And we received a draft copy of that earlier today, so that will be prepared for next week. Then we have school, next school board meeting on the thirtieth at seven. School starts on the fourth, which everyone is very excited for, the post-Labor Day start. A lot of people are. And then we have a school board meeting that week at seven to get in our first and third schedule moving forward. So our next meeting after that will be at seven on the Tuesday. And there is the monthly building committee meeting on the eighteenth at five PM on that Tuesday. Anything else that we need to add to the calendar that I missed? We will have on the twenty-eighth at the junior, senior high at six-thirty an information night for parents there. And on the thirtieth at six-thirty, at the same, our meeting's going on at the elementary school for information about the, for parents at that school pertaining to the start of school and construction and all that stuff. All right, going back to the agenda, the next thing is Chris Hawkins, our town moderator, who has not joined us this evening, so I will move him to our next meeting. And the next item I requested to add to the meeting was just the, the training schedule for the New Hampshire School Boards Association. I know people had missed getting those emails sometimes, so I just want to make sure that everyone has. everyone has them. You know, as members of the association, we have the benefit to get some training for ourselves as board members and board members collectively, so just keep an eye out for that. If there's something that you would like to sign up for, just get in touch with Penny to have her register for that program.
I think Ingrid has already been registered. You got the notification.
I did register. I registered for the two on budget, I think it is, and the third one was on...
Just school funding, I think. School funding.
Yeah, school funding. Yeah, it was the funding one.
So, thank you for taking advantage of those opportunities, Ingrid. The next thing that we have is the workshop review calendar. We have spoken a couple times about having a business meeting for the first meeting of the month and then doing various workshops for the second meeting of the month to get some topics in, and this is, Meredith and I went over this on last Friday, some, a draft plan for those meetings. The first one would be September twentieth, we'd look at special education, and then the next one sort of get dicey because obviously we'll move into budget situations. We had tentatively said October sixteenth for the first budget overview, sort of a global, but there are challenges potentially with that, so Meredith, at least if you could touch on those, that would be great.
We would say that's, the town budget is presented, I think, on the fifteenth or the seventeenth, right in there. So again, that's one of the challenges with shared services is you have a person preparing two budgets simultaneously if you wanna move up your calendar, so, you know, we'll do whatever the board requests, but I just think you should be aware of that.
When Meredith shared that information with me, I said I would share it with you all to, so we could make a decision that was amenable to everybody to get the budget information out. So my question to you is how would you like to handle it? Would you like to proceed with the sixteenth as the initial budget workshop? Should we maybe, this has a budget thing on the twenty-fifth, November first before the normal business meeting, and then November eighth for another budget session, and then the budget adoption would be on the fifteenth of November with the draft of strategic plan that night.
So if you were to have a general idea where the CBA would be heading, no clue?
No. I mean, you're only two or three meetings in at that point, you won't have that information.
And, you know, basically, we came up with that because we were talking about stuff, I think at the retreat, one of the issues was not having the budget information early enough, and so we were trying to make that, facilitate that, but...
So can you do that schedule one more time, please?
It's right here.
You've got it in your packet.
It's in your packet. And basically, what it is, is the second meeting of every month for the most part is a workshop as opposed to just a straight-up meeting.
So maybe we can, because I also included for you...
The budget schedule.
With other documents that Penny left for you was a draft budget development schedule, so maybe you can just look at the workshop topics in general first and then come back to the budget calendar.
Okay, good idea.
Meredith, I'm sorry, I missed the, I was reading, I missed the whole part you said about overlapping Lisa's budget schedule. What was the issue? You've gotta deliver the budgets for both the town and school the same time.
That would be the same week.
Same week, okay. So this would help that, this proposed...
No, that is the...
Right smack dab in the middle of it.
What would help that?
Yeah.
Starting probably around that November first date as we did last year, but again, we're trying to honor the board's request to move sooner, but that's...
Should, could, would it make sense to sort of split the difference and start with the twenty-fifth and keep that in place and then proceed moving forward? Does that make sense? And we'll come up...
Sure, and of course, it doesn't prevent any, talking about any peculiar issues that may come up before then that may affect the budget without devoting the whole meeting to it, right?
Right, but that, you know, I think, and I would hope that those discussions will be ongoing throughout, no matter what time of year we're in, but I think this would be the targeted budget workshop situation. So why don't we remove the sixteenth and we'll all come up with another thing for that and then proceed with the schedule unless something arises and we need to, or something else.
That better accommodates Lisa's concern.
Yeah. So moving forward, November fifteenth, I just read that one, December twentieth would be sort of a district data review with a planning for our spring retreat. January seventeenth competency-based education update, then February twenty-first, the strategic plan should be finalized by that point. March twenty-first, SST and school nutrition, then April eighteenth, science curriculum, May sixteenth, professional development, and then June twentieth, workshop then for the next year. Any thoughts about this? You know, obviously, we will, you know, if we need to modify things, we can do that, but I think it's good to have a framework of what the plans are to get the people here. I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, in terms of Erica, I'm not sure how many people have even interacted with her that much, so I think it'd be helpful to have her come and make a presentation about what's going on in special ed and student services area of things. That's why we put her first.
Regarding the February twenty-first meeting on strategic plan, what's the thought there? Would we have already adopted it by then, under our current schedule or...
We will adopt the framework in November, that is, the November fifteenth meeting, which is, as if you recall from our presenters, sort of the high-level goals, values, mission, values and goals, and then the framework, which is the detailed piece, the timelines, the measures, the specific strategies and whatnot, would not be laid out for you and finalized until that mid-February date.
Okay, is that, we had that whole discussion about who's gonna write up what, is the more granular version stuff that the, that they'll write up, or is that we both do it and go back?
It'd be working with the administrative team and the facilitator.
I just, my thought, Meredith, was that we got a lot going on, right? You have a lot going on this fall. I just didn't know, the first half is the stuff that they're gonna sort of run with.
And they're gonna continue that support work through until the mid-February.
Okay.
They'll do kind of the in-between homework, the pulling together of the pieces to get that final, full document put together.
I guess my question would be, does that date synchronize well with what your office staff and the school personnel who have to work on that?
Well, again, I think that's the timeline you laid out with the facilitator, so I think that's what we've contracted for now, but...
Okay.
And I think, you know, if I recall, the reason why we chose the firm that we chose was that they were going to do more of the firming up of the work too. Not that you guys are not gonna be a part of it and that's not gonna be a major thing on the task, but I think we have chosen...
But they'll help with the wordsmithing, they'll do the editing, they'll compile the document into a standard framework, you know, matrix, whatever framework you choose, but...
All right, so any thoughts or questions on that? Moving on to the next thing, we have handbooks from the elementary school and the junior senior high.
So these are not on for approval tonight, none of those three. The intent was to provide them to you, give you time to review them, send us any questions so that we can answer those prior to your next meeting so that you can act on both the elementary, junior senior high handbook and the employee handbook at the next meeting.
Any major things, suggestions or changes or...
I would say no to both of the school handbooks. And one of the pieces that, you know, we probably would make sense for us to do moving forward is not to have to redo the entire handbook every year. You just adopt a handbook, you don't have to include the staff list and every person in every position every year. That can be on your website, but you just do the key part of the handbook because most things don't change.
So does it go out as paper, or does it go out as disc?
Only if requested.
Only if requested, okay.
Yep, otherwise, we provide it digitally.
Okay.
Yeah, why would we list the people? Like, what was that?
I think that's legacy practice.
But if it's going out digitally, that's an easy one to sub in every year, isn't it?
You could, that, again, that requires sort of an approval process and those pieces, but otherwise, they could just update the staff list on the website every year.
Yep, makes sense.
All right, so we will add those to the agenda for next time for approval. And if there, as Meredith said, if anyone has any questions or please send them yours and get them addressed. And Ingrid's got hers already. Perfect. All right, in the action items section, the first thing is approval of the July twelfth public and non-public minutes.
I make a motion to approve those?
We have a motion from Mr. Kennison with a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the July twelfth public and non-public minutes. Any amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye, approved. The next thing is the approval of the manifests. Al, do you have the manifests?
I have them.
I don't know if Jim is gonna present to us, I don't know, we didn't want him to wait there.
It's the next thing after manifest, so.
Should've said it earlier.
I didn't even think about it. Sorry, Jim.
Okay, this is payroll and AP manifests. Total of all manifests is six million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And I move that we approve those.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the manifests as listed. All those in favor say aye. Aye, manifests listed. And Jim, I apologize, we are now at the bleacher placement part of our program, so if you'd like to come to the mic and give us some feedback on that, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, the memo is in here from Greg Ralz, our facilities director. This was incorporated in our budget for this fiscal year. These bleachers are, date from the installation of the gym, so they're about thirty years old at this point. They aren't really ADA accessible, they don't have the hand railing, so for safety reasons as well as just their general operation and condition, we determined last year that it was time to replace them, so we put that out for bid. The bid is a little under what we projected budgetarily, which is great news, and we're targeting installation in mid-October, sometime in October.
It's gonna be later than that, it'll probably be closer to mid-September by the time we get things rolling.
Okay, mid-November?
I have a question.
Sorry, I...
September.
Okay.
I apologize. Meredith, would you like some...
Jim Miners, our assistant director of facilities, who's working so that Greg is freed up to be the clerk of the works in his full-time, well, part-time capacity as a school employee. So Jim is the person handling the school-related pieces in his stead.
I don't know, yes. Hey, Jim, does that number include the disposal of the existing?
It includes the disposal from both vendors, but one vendor does not include the cost of the dumpsters and the disposal of those, so it's, actually, the high-priced vendor, the seventy-nine thousand, is probably a little light by a thousand dollars, I would guess. Both of them are removing the materials, but it's just a policy they have not disposing of them.
How long will it take to get the job done?
About three weeks. It's gonna take a week for demolition and probably two weeks for construction.
So when I was doing the basketball program, I was like, it was, I had to have, go into training on how to pull out those old bleachers and if they were done wrongly and, you know, they would mess up everything, and these will be easier and...
Yeah, this was, this was really pretty straightforward and easy because we contracted, well, we got bids from the three primary builders in the country, and their local representative, there's two of them bid on it, one did not, but the quality levels of the two that bid are very consistent and totally acceptable. The one that's recommended, which actually is a lower price, I like their drive system better. We have twenty-four-foot sections of bleachers that have to move uniformly, and their drive features are much more robust.
It's electric, just press a button?
Yeah, you plug in a pendant and run a little hand control.
I see.
I'm excited for the safety because that first step is a doozy.
And just the jump rope show. All those people for the last twelve years.
Yep.
Every concert, every athletic event, it's a worry and a risk.
So do you need a motion for that or...
Need a motion to accept the proposed bid from CBC seeding of Summersworth in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Alberg to accept the bid from CBC Seeding Incorporated in the amount of seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents. Any questions further about that? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving this motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Jim. And the last, Meredith's food service pricing.
Yes, so Linda Hoppe's not able to be here, but Lisa Ambrosio, as her supervisor, is gonna walk us through the proposal and how that is determined.
So simply back in July, I know we had mentioned that we were going to have a price increase, and it's been communicated already on the website to people, but we need your approval tonight based on the USDA. They have a paid lunch equity tool that we do, and based on that, there's a cap of ten cents, you can't go over that per year, and we would've projected to have eleven cent for an increase based on the tool, but I'm here to ask for a ten-cent increase on the lunch prices at the elementary school going from two sixty-five to two seventy-five and at the junior senior high going from two eighty-five to two ninety-five.
And as always, Lisa, there are opportunities for people to get free and reduced lunch if they require it.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
And those forms are available online year-round, and people can also call either our office or the school offices for access to those.
Yeah, and if you need assistance filling it out and that, you can make arrangements with us to help you with that as well.
I seek a motion to approve the increase of the lunch costs.
Still moved? Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Mr. Kennison to increase the lunch prices by ten cents at each school, an increase from two sixty-five to two seventy-five, am I right, at the elementary school and two, no, I'm doing the wrong one. Two sixty-five, two seventy-five, and two eighty-five to two ninety-five as in junior senior high. Any questions about that? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving that ten-cent increase say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, just to review our calendar for the school board one more time before we go into our non-public session. Next week, we have our joint school board town council meeting at seven o'clock in the auditorium. On the thirtieth, we have at seven P M. our regular school board meeting, September sixth, school board meeting for parents and town members out there. On the twenty-eighth of August at the junior senior high and the thirtieth of August, both at six-thirty P M., there will be information meeting for parents at each of the individual schools.
Do we have, like, an agenda? Are we taking up anything special with the town council?
No, it's just a review of sort of where we are. Meredith and Steve gave us a draft of the agenda today, so I have not opened it as of yet, but I did receive it earlier today. But there's nothing major that's gonna be discussed.
Can I just cover one thing that I omitted from my report because I had attached it mentally to personnel? So we have some internal personnel changes, some teachers transferring buildings, so I just wanna announce those here so that you're aware of it. It doesn't require board approval because they're already existing employees, but we have two special educators moving from the elementary school to the junior senior high school, Dawn Ellen Fielding and Kim Grant, and then we have a fifth-grade classroom teacher moving to a special education position at the elementary school, Shayna Thorell, and then Jen Boston, who has been a seventh-grade ELA teacher, is moving to the fifth-grade position. So both administrators, all of those teachers are really excited about those changes. We've had, you know, those changes happen from time to time. We had Mr. Webb move from the elementary school to the junior senior high last year, but I think it speaks to, you know, some continued development and shared culture between our buildings, so those are positive moves and we're excited for those pieces. Parents impacted by those changes will be getting notification from the schools beginning tomorrow, but we wanted to announce it and make the board aware of it first.
And what does Ms. Boston teach?
She's been a seventh-grade ELA teacher, and so that position was posted. Interviews are scheduled for that, but she's a certified K-eight teacher, so she will be teaching fifth grade.
All right, I seek a motion to enter non-public session at seven forty-six. Al, is my math right?
You got it.
I seek a motion to go into non-public. Under RSA ninety-one, A, three, two, B, and C.
Still moved.
I need a second for that motion. So we have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Alberg to go into non-public. We will do it with a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKenney?
Aye.
Me, we are in non-public at seven forty-six P M. Me, we are in non-public at seven forty-six P M.